...that we all love. Whereas President Barack Obama proclaimed on May 31st that June 2016 is Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual and Transgender Pride Month, reminding us that the Civil Rights Act of 1964, which forbade discrimination on the basis of gender as well as race in hiring, promoting and firing, continues to apply today and is the foundation of a truly democratic and free society. Whereas the Supreme Court's 2015 landmark decision reminded us that the Constitution guarantees, all of us, the right to pursue the happiness that allows for two humans, regardless of their gender, to love one another and to form a legal union with equal liberty and the dignity to do so in the eyes of the United States laws granting them the rights and privileges of married couples in the pursuit of their life as one couple. And whereas Pima County acknowledges that we must continue to be vigilant and tirelessly work to honor, support, and defend these civil rights and freedoms granted not only for the LGBT community but for all of our residents as we speak positive change to eliminate sexism, racism, and prejudice of any and all types in Arizona. And whereas our LGBT residents have made our making and will continue to make important contributions to the improvement of the quality of life in our Pima County region, now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors here proclaims the month of June 2016 to be LGBT Pride Month and ask all residents to support our LGBT friends and neighbors in building an inclusive community where everyone can prosper and thrive. Passed and adopted this 21st day of June 2016. Please offer your own final applause. (Applause). I know that we have another proclamation that we're going to read, but does somebody want to say a few words about LGBT pride before we get going? How about you, Abby? That's fine, that's fine, please do it.
I've been selected by my peers, thank you. So it was 47 years ago this month that trans women of color, gay men, and other marginalized communities stood up against the forces of marginalization and hate that pushed them into the darkness. And the next year was the first Pride Parade in New York City, and ever since then, Pride Month has been celebrated in defiance, in pride of who we are, in defiance of those forces who continue to try and push us into the closet. And we saw those forces again in Orlando on June 20th, when again it was queer people of color who were attacked because of who they are. And we simply cannot allow that to continue. That hate did not come from overseas, that hate comes from within our own society, and we must all work together to end it. Thank you. (Applause).
Thank you, Abby, those were powerful words. And now proclamation, whereas June 2016 is National Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual and Transgender Pride Month, recognizing the contributions of the LGBT Americans and honoring those who work to ensure equality. And whereas on this day, Pima County also is declaring that June 2016 is LGBT Pride Month and affirming its commitment to honor the important contributions of the LGBT community to the improvement of the quality of life in our region. And whereas LGBT Pride Month is a time when members of the LGBT community gather together to celebrate hard-won achievements of their struggle for equality and to reaffirm their commitment to achieving full equality for all LGBT Americans. And whereas members of the LGBT community have long been subjected to violence and threats to personal safety, and whereas a gunman opened fire on members of the LGBT community at a nightclub in Orlando, Florida on June 12th, 2016, in the worst-ever mass shooting in the United States resulting in at least 49 people killed and dozens of others injured severely. And whereas Pima County acknowledges that we must work to make our community a safe place to live, to work, to love, and to be free for all of our residents, including our brothers and sisters in the LGBT community. And whereas, Pima County acknowledges that all Americans have an inalienable right to gather together and share a sense of community, free from violence and fear of attack, now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors mourns the members of the LGBT community who were killed or injured in the shocking June 12th attack and asks that all residents, all of us, to stand in solidarity with the LGBT community and to work to make Pima County a safe place for everyone. Passed and adopted this 21st day of June 2016. And I would ask all of you to rise in memory. And I would invite Rabbi Cohen and the Chief to say a few words of prayer.
Please begin by taking a moment of silence for the victims of this horrific attack at Pulse nightclub last Saturday night. We are grateful for this proclamation of solidarity, this affirmation of covenant of what we Jews call brete, our social contract. I had the privilege of participating in the solidarity walk in vigil the night after the attack in Orlando organized here in Tucson. It was incredible to see so many members of our community come together in support of the victims. It was a great demonstration of our remarkable, diverse, caring Tucson, of the love and compassion that are at the heart of who we are as a community. But that night, I also said that I was profoundly sad and very, very tired. I'm sad for the terrible and needless boss of vibrant vital life murdered in this hate crime, so sad for them, for their families, for their friends, sad for the traumatized victims of another senseless shooting. But right now, I feel very, very tired. I'm tired of offering prayers of consolation and comfort in the aftermath of yet another atrocity. We should all be tired, tired of mourning the dead at the Safeway on Isla in Tucson, tired of mourning the dead in Newtown, Connecticut, Sandy Hook Elementary School, tired of mourning the dead at Fort Hood, Texas, in Isla Vista, California, near UCSB, in Colorado, in Wisconsin, Oregon, and San Bernardino, and now in Orlando, the worst carnage of all. I am sad but very, very tired and just a little bit angry. We should all be tired of our fellow citizens being murdered in mass shootings by men armed with assault weapons married to 30-shot magazines that allowed them to fire 30 rounds in only 10 seconds without reloading. Tired of people who should never be allowed to purchase firearms, people on the terrorist watch list, but who are clearly severely mentally disturbed, being permitted to buy assault weapons with high-capacity magazines. No private citizen in America needs that kind of firepower for hunting or target practice. These are weapons for the military to use in combat, not for us to have to massacre our fellow Americans. My friends, we need to be a community of covenant. The massacre in Orlando took place on the holiday of Shavuot, the Jewish festival in which we affirm our covenant with God to build in this world not only a nation but a world of peace. That covenant is something that we affirm in America with a constitution. It's a covenant to respect our fellow citizens of any background and experience. It's time for us to stop being tired. It's time for us now to act in any way that we can so that we never again have to experience the beauty of a proclamation like the one we have received today.
I don't have any prepared remarks, but I will say this, it's hard not to have a certain amount of conflicting emotions as we spend some time this morning thinking about the victims of the shooting in Orlando. On the one hand, it is Pride Month and a time to celebrate the accomplishments we've made working together, gays, lesbians, transgender citizens, and straight allies. Very important to have allies, and we've made tremendous progress in the area of gay marriage, of many rights that are long overdue. There's pride, but there's also sadness that we continue to see LGBT members of our communities overrepresented in terms of hate crimes. They are now a group of individuals who are highest when it comes to being victimized by hate crimes throughout our country, very sad. It's also hard not to pay attention to the fact that especially if you look even around our own community and see the number of homeless young people, again LGBT folks are overrepresented among those individuals, in many cases having been kicked out of their homes, very sad. So pride, sadness, and yet hope. Hope that we are part of a community where we celebrate diversity, where we move beyond just tolerance, where we actually talk about the challenges that lie ahead and work together to make things better. We know we are in one of 23 states still in this country in which LGBT citizens do not have equal rights and protections when it comes to housing, job discrimination, a whole host of other areas, so we know there's work to be done, but hope that we can come together and support each other, support our diverse community, and continue to move forward even in the face of adversity and setbacks, which is sometimes part of the process and the arc of social justice. So thank you all for being part of this this morning.
Thank you all for standing up. Thanks Rabbi, thanks Chief for your remarks. Now I'm going to move on to call to the public. Remind everybody that you have three minutes, we ask you to be respectful and abide by rules of civility. Eric, who looks like hell, please.
Again, I really appreciate not to bury the earth, but I'm president of the Negroes Reporters Committee in South Dakota. And I'm here basically trying to encourage you to address again the problem of our county law and street. I talked to you last session and that didn't work out very well. Hopefully we'll do better. As you know, this is not a new problem. Our infrastructure has been deteriorating for a decade or more with little and no attention by the county. The longer we wait, the more costly it becomes. The problem now impacts tens of thousands of your constituents. My most recent understanding of the county plan, or lack thereof, was April 21st Green Valley presentation by Administrator Huckleberry, who told us not to expect any action for the next four to five years. You cannot continue to kick the can down the road if for no other reason than the puddles probably won't prevent.
Thank you.
Okay, at your meeting, I made what I thought was a constructive proposal to retain the property tax increase originally passed for key USD support and use it to fix the roads. You elected to reject this proposal, and as a property owner and taxpayer, I respect your dedication to continuing to maintain the lowest possible tax rate, so, okay. On the other hand, the $300 million, roughly $300 million that will be required over the next 10 years to correct this problem isn't going to fall out of the sky. So we need probably an allocation this year in the near term of something like $25 to $30 million to get this process going. The period... First to me that you have two alternatives. One is to find a revenue source that will provide the needed funds. That may be behind this, but maybe not. Secondly, you are about to review and approve a budget in excess of $1.2 billion. Somewhere in your substantial budget, since the first thing is you've got to agree that this problem has to have a priority, somewhere in your substantial budget, then you should make an effort to locate lower priority projects or activities or expenditures that can be eliminated or delayed and rebudget these funds for road repair. This needs to be done as part of this year's budgeting process, which is why I'm talking to you today.
Mine has expired, so do you want to wrap up real quick?
Yeah, I'll do it quickly. At your last meeting, I gathered some signs to remind you of the problem to help you continue deliberation. The sign said "Fix Our Streets." I talked a little, I thought a little bit more about that, and it turns out I changed the sign. And it seems to me that these streets are not our streets, they're your streets, and they've been built to county specifications accepted by the county, and you have an obligation and a responsibility to maintain them. So I encourage you to step up to the plate and let's get this in underway. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Imani.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors, Director Huckleberry. I'm from the Desert Museum, I'm here on behalf of a project you have before you on the agenda, and I just want to take this opportunity to mention that this is one of those times where we can actually show how the museum invests in the facilities that the county actually owns. We've got a large project that relates to our art institute, which to some people might be one of those things where people are confused by why is the Desert Museum here talking about arts? And in reality, often people think of us as a museum, zoo, aquarium, garden, etc., but we have a very significant and growing art institute, so focused on the visual arts with over 100 classes a year that are taking place. And we've had to realize that the growth of that art institute, which reckons about 25% a year, is necessitating more space. So what you have before you was actually four classrooms, you know, building that's an extension and completion of a project that was approved in 2004 with the monument building and the World Wiza Theater. So I just want to thank you for your support for projects like this and allowing us to lead us.
Thank you. Steve Hoffman.
Sorry, I wasn't actually expecting to come up during the call to the items, but I put in my speaker slot because I serve this year again on the outside agencies committee that you guys put together. And so I just really want to encourage you to support the package that we've put before you and to say thank you. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to the taxpayers of Pima County for supporting this on an ongoing basis. I'd like to thank you for your support of the outside agencies. Out of a billion dollar budget, the low over $2 million that goes into this is obviously you joining item in your budget, and I don't want to minimize $2 million either, but for the folks that are receiving the services that are provided by all these agencies, that $2 million is the key to sending their lives in totally different directions. We heard some really rough stuff this morning with the presentation that we all went through, and it's hard sometimes not to focus on some of that really rough things that we have to deal with as a community. And if you look at the list of agencies that you're supporting in this, there's domestic violence, there's all sorts of really rough things to look at, but I think it's much more important to look at the really amazing things that are being done in our community. And the vast majority of the programs that are funded through outside agencies are semen programs, nutrition programs, programs to help kids, community centers, programs to keep kids from getting in trouble. And you know, money, well, that's what you're rolling on today. I promise you that the investment that people in our community are making in time and handholding and mentoring is well in excess of any money that you could put into these programs. The investment that people in our communities are making in helping make a difference in other people's lives really makes all the work that you guys do and all the work that we do worthwhile. And again, I just have to say thank you to the taxpayers of Pima County for supporting this. And it is important to note that Pima County supported this even in some rough, rough, rough budget times where this easily could have been one of those things that just got zeroed out from the budget, but you guys made the decision that especially in the hard times, this is something that's really needed. And so I just want to thank you, and thank you for your ongoing assistance and support, and we'll keep working with yours. And I also want to tell you, you got a great staff working for you in outside agencies, and the people that you guys have individually put on this committee are really great committee members. It's really been an honor to work with them. If Pima County ran every budget I likely run this committee, there would be nobody here complaining about anything you guys do, because you guys do a really good job overseeing where those monies are spent and making sure there's accountability. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your service. Richard Hernandez.
Good morning, Pima County, I'm Richard Hernandez. Today I'm going to ask the Board, I'm going to follow Supervisor Elias's request for a few minutes of personal privilege, but the first thing I need to talk about is the massacre of my brothers and sisters in Orlando. In case you don't know, I am a gay man. I am very proud to be part of this community. To my brothers and sisters who were taken from us way too soon, I'm a believer, I'm sure someone at the gate let you in. Pray for us that are left behind. To their biological families, moms, dads, tatas, we agree with you. We've talked about you, we've pried with you and for you, and again I ask that you pray for us. It's kind of interesting to you and me, and I want to share this with the community, the words lesbian, gay, transgender is something that we don't use. We call each other family. We are family because we unite, because we have to protect each other and love each other and care for each other and accept each other. We call ourselves family. So if I can leave one thought with you on some of the others that we have today, is we're not lesbians and gays, we're family. This Latino night, as Supervisor Elias can share with you, was the big night at that club. We were dancing to salsa mirambe, and guess what, I hope some cunias because I'm Mexican. We were celebrating life, we lost so many people. You don't realize, but we do. I'm in my late 50s, in case you're wondering. If you're as old as I am and you're gay, we have been attacked by the church, by law enforcement, by the courts, by the politicians, we have been victims, but we have faith. At the candlelight vigil that I think, I know that Supervisor Elias attended, but I don't think anybody else attended, one of the things that was brought out by the crowd, I heard chanting, people saying, when the Chief of Police, who is gay and who's new to the job, people were yelling, "How many queers have you arrested today?" I was like, wow, what are they talking about? If you're as old as I am, you have been victims of law enforcement, of the church. Did anybody see that pastor in California? If you didn't, in Univision, he said they should gather all the gay people, put them up against the wall and shoot them. How's that? In the name of God. Anybody see that? So this is very dear to me, and I still want to talk about Pima County business and if the Board will allow me that, to finish what I'm talking about.
Your time is up, sir. Mr. Hernandez, your three minutes have expired. Thank you.
Supervisor Bronson.
Thank you, sir.
I'm talking about the death of people. Can I finish?
Sir, your time has expired.
I rest my case about politicians.
Christopher Cole.
Good morning, I'm Christopher Cole, Vice Chair of the county Liberal Care Party, but then you already knew that, didn't you? Two weeks ago, when I was speaking here, I forgot a point I wanted to make. On the bus ride down here, I met a man, a few years younger than I am, and Mr. Carroll saw us chatting just outside the building here and waved hi at us. That man, in 1970, was convicted, he was railroaded, for the fire at the Pioneer Hotel. Forty-two years he spent in prison, cheated of his, that much of his life by a justice system that obviously then was corrupt and probably still is. He's homeless. Pima County owes him. Pima County owes him a lot. You haven't paid, you haven't paid. But, Mr. Huckleberry's crony runs his bicycle into a pothole on a bicycle path, I forget how many millions of dollars the settlement was for, I understand that's already been paid, I may be wrong, but probably not. You owe that man who was, unfortunately, I admit, I forgot his name, who was wrongfully convicted, railroaded, and had so much of his life stolen from him, pain. On another matter, the one that Mr. Elias referred to for, asked for transparency, if I understand the issue correctly, Supervisor Miller charges the Arizona Red Star, I mean Daily Star, a certain amount of money for copying papers. This money, this charge is well advertised, and the county attorney has already said it's fair, it's legal, it's just. But apparently, and if I call them the Red Stars, a nickname they got that when I had when I first got here, apparently they're on a personal vendetta against Supervisor Miller, and they want you to help them. I suggest you don't, they don't deserve it. Thank you.
Edward, is it Cizek?
Cizek.
Cizek. Cizek. Sorry, I mangled your name.
It's okay. Happens a lot. Hello, Madam Chair. I've never met other members of the Board of Supervisors. As I'm sure you're aware, election season is fast approaching, and whether it comes to time and candidates, including myself and the members of the board, are soliciting donations to finance their campaigns. As a candidate for state legislature, I was pleased to learn that thanks to the Arizona Clean Elections Commission, there was an option available for me and for other candidates for legislative and statewide office to receive public funding to run their campaigns. However, I was dismayed to learn that colleagues of mine who have decided to seek elected office in county and local elections had no such provision available to them. Public funding should be available to all candidates seeking elected office. We know that despite Justice Anthony Kennedy's protestations, receiving large amounts of funding for his campaign, or the support of large amounts of supposedly independent expenditures made by PACs and super PACs, do create the appearance of impropriety among our elected officials. Even when no evidence of quid pro quo vote buying can be found, large donations to campaigns of elected officials lead the people to believe that their representatives may be compromised and that said representatives may be acting in the best interest of their donors rather than the people who elected them. Such a conflict of interest should not be a prerequisite for anybody seeking state or local office. I recognize that the county Board of Supervisors cannot overturn Citizens United and eliminate super PACs from being legally allowed to spread their corrupting influence throughout local statewide and legislative elections. I will be working, if elected, to push the legislature to join 17 other states to call for a constitutional convention to reverse this Supreme Court decision and to allow states and Congress to pass reasonable limitations on the ability of corporations and dark money groups to spend money to the purpose of buying elections and legislative outcomes. I'm also proud to support State Representative Penn Clark's push to force Eskey's 1516, the so-called dark money bill, to a referendum in November election, and I encourage each of you here to join me in that fight. In the meantime, I call upon the county Board of Supervisors here today, in concert with Tucson City Council, to develop and implement a county clean elections commission modeled after the state commission to provide a path for public funding for individuals seeking office at county, city, and local level. It is more important than ever to make sure the voices of the people are heard and represented in their state and local governments, not just those with the money and influence to give to elected officials. Our political system is broken, but together we can work to fix it. I encourage the members of the Board of Supervisors to put the interest of their constituents ahead of their own political benefit and to work to implement such a commission post haste. I thank the board members for their time.
Thank you. Thank you for your candidacy. Maybe I should be sending condolences. I don't know which. Congratulations on your candidacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mike, um, Cease?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Mike Cease. I'm the chairperson of the Green Party of Pima County. And my statement is brief. I would like to urge the Board of Supervisors to enact a $15 an hour minimum wage ordinance for the citizens of Pima County modeled after the Seattle ordinance that most of us are aware of. And my colleague Josh Riley is going to speak in more detail about this in a few minutes. So I'll keep my comments brief. Thank you.
Thank you. And Josh, you're next.
Hello, Madam Chair. Board of Supervisors. My name is Josh Riley, and I am a candidate for county supervisor in District 4. I'd like to thank Mr. Carroll for his service. And I am with the Green Party. I'm a former elected official, and I'm a longtime political activist. I've been frustrated with the reluctance of many politicians to take one very basic common sense approach to address the problems of economic insecurity facing many of our families and citizens in Pima County and in the nationwide. I'm standing here today to ask you to raise the minimum wage to $15 per hour in Pima County. I'm asking for this board to enact an ordinance modeled after the ordinance, which I will distribute to you, passed by the city of Seattle in 2015, raising minimum wage countywide to $15 per hour. Roughly 17% of Pima County residents fall under the national poverty line, and increasing minimum wage would place Pima County in a progressive economic growth position as compared to our current $8.05 minimum. Raising minimum wage a lot across the board will make a big difference. Raising the minimum wage is a very efficient way of addressing inequality and gentrification. Everybody's on the same playing field. It's a simple rule. It doesn't require a lot of administration. You don't have to negotiate anything. It just is what it is. Americans nationwide today spend a minimum of $150 billion a year in tax subsidies that go to people, not people who don't have jobs, but who have jobs and are still in poverty. I'm sure Mr. Huckleberry and the rest of you here today know even better than I do how much our county government shells out for the very hardworking poor and homeless in Pima County with little support from Arizona state government. There's no earthly reason why Walmart, Target, McDonald's, and Walgreens, or any of these other giant profitable corporations that do business in Pima County, should have one worker in need of public assistance. It's ridiculous, and it's not just getting people out of, from under the need for public assistance, that's important. It will increase buying power for these workers, which will drive our local economy. People earning minimum wage of $8.05 is not, they're not going to eat out at restaurants, they're not going to stay at hotels, they're not taking piano lessons, they're not going to the gym or to the yoga studios, they're not sending mom flowers on Mother Day, Mother's Day, and they're not buying dad ties on Father's Day. These people are being left behind. Now, if you raise minimum wage to $15 an hour, our workers will be doing all of these things and more. And then, all of a sudden, not just business thrives, but small business thrives. So I respectfully ask this board to be on the cutting edge and challenge the constitutionality of the recent state law and pass an ordinance to raise minimum wage.
Your time has expired.
Okay. In Pima County to $15. Thank you. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Brian Vickel.
Good morning, Chair Bronson, members of the board, Mr. Huckleberry. My name is Brian Vickel. I'm a resident of unincorporated Pima County, District 1. I speak today regarding items 5 and 6 on the addendum agenda. To say that we have an interesting situation involving Supervisor Miller and her former staffer, Tim Dejarlay, is an understatement. Allegations were made that Mr. Dejarlay created an online newspaper, the Arizona Daily Herald, and a fictitious editor, Jim Falcon, to covertly gather information on various Board of Supervisors candidate campaigns, a claim vehemently denied by both Mr. Dejarlay and Supervisor Miller. In any case, Supervisor Miller either knew or should have known what was taking place in her office. The constituents of District 1 deserve a supervisor who is at a minimum aware of the daily operations of their office. Today, I am joined by fellow constituents, who could stand if they would like, of District 1 to call for the immediate and full release of all records requested by local media via the Freedom of Information Act. We, the taxpayers of District 1, have a right to know what is taking place in the office supposedly representing our interests. The current situation in which Supervisor Miller is not only the custodian of records, but also the redactor and the accused is unacceptable. If she was unaware of the goings on, then what is the point of all the poker dagger activity? If she was truly unaware of the situation, then there is a clear oversight issue in that office that must be rectified. Supervisor Miller, rise above the fray. Support the waiver of attorney-client privilege and honor the letter and intent of the law, and let the public know the government's business. Release the documents in their entirety. The sooner the better. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Michael Gordy.
Good morning. My name is Mike Gordy. I'm a retired school teacher. I'm a candidate for the Pima County Superior and Public Schools. I wasn't intending to speak. I first of all want to apologize for my attire. I forgot to bring a shirt with me when I rode my bicycle down here. It's now dryer, but it's definitely not what I should be wearing to avoid the supervisors' meeting. I decided to speak because I have been down here only a couple of times, and this time especially with the proclamations, I feel very proud to be a candidate for Pima County office and a Pima County resident. This county, unlike too many of our counties in Arizona, leads the way in terms of being open, honest, and truly looking out for the best of our citizenry. I'd like to piggyback on the Green Party folks about the minimum wage. Our state legislature has often provided tax cuts for wealthy people and said that they can't afford to provide services to people who are in need. Now, at the state, at the federal level, a tax cut actually does kind of make some sense. But a tax cut for wealthy people at the county or state level doesn't make sense because the money will not necessarily be spent in Pima County. It might be spent in San Diego for a yacht or a trip to Disneyland. It might be spent in Aspen for a chalet, something like that. But if you raise the minimum wage, just like 301 raised the salary, the money available to teachers, unfortunately, not to educations, to professionals also, that was a big mistake in that initiative, that money gets spent in Arizona because most of the people who are getting that money from either a minimum wage or from the additional funds from 301 goes to people who can't do anything but spend. So instead of a break on the economy, as John Hoopenthall said to us back in 2008, that's actually a stimulus. And it's a much better stimulus because it's going to people who otherwise would find their lives to be not particularly good. I really am proud to be part of Pima County. In some ways, I kind of would like to be by Arizona just because the rest of the state where they tend to end up being very, I'm not even sure what the right word for it is. I guess meme might work, or as Craig Wall said, hazy crazy. But I want to thank you again for Pride Day. I am a strong supporter of GLTQ. My A, I guess, is all of them, right? As someone who is a straight person and more than happy to be among the people who are just doing their own thing, which is what every one of us should be able to do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hey, Michael. Hey, who ever tell you you look like Bernie Sanders on Friday?
Actually, the first time that happened was this past summer. We were, we were coming down from a family reunion for my wife Bridget, and we went into, went walking, started walking to this reservoir. My hair was much longer. I was doing lots of love. And this woman looks at me, says, "Are you Bernie Sanders?" It hasn't happened, Richard, since I cut my hair further away.
You still look great, brother. That's all I got to say. But thank you.
No problem.
That concludes call to the audience, call to the public. So now we're going to move back to the agenda. And this, let me remind everybody, is the special final budget adoption meeting. These are hearings. This is Board of Supervisors now sitting as other boards, the flood control district board, item 7, truth in taxation and final budget hearing. Is there anyone which is... Is this flood control? No. Okay, we have no speakers. What's the pleasure of the board? Then on items 7 and 8, and resolution 2016-FC1. We need to close the public hearing.
Approve the resolution number 2016-FC1.
Which, for a budget of $17,652,430 in tax rate of .3335? There's a motion and a second. This is flood control. We'll need a roll call, though.
Supervisor Carroll?
Aye.
Supervisor Elias?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
No.
Supervisor Valdez?
Aye.
Chair Bronson?
Aye. Motion carries, board of one. Moving on to Board of Supervisors sitting as the improvement district board, this is final budget hearings. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to us on these items? If not, then what's the pleasure of the board regarding resolution item 9 and resolution 16 and resolution 20 and resolution 23? And resolution 16 is in the amount of $54,620, I mean, $54,000, excuse me. Hay Hook Ranch would really love that, $54 million. $54,629 for Hay Hook Ranch. Resolution 20 is in the amount of $14,211 for Martimer Edition. And then, resolution 23 is for street lighting improvement districts, and a number of them, I do not believe, Mr. Lee, that we need to read all those into the record, but we can adopt them as stated in the agenda.
That's correct, Madam Chair. As long as the agendas are accurate.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
I move that we close the public hearing and approve resolution number 16 and resolution number 20 and resolution 23 as written in item 9 on our meeting agenda for June 21st, 2016. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Supervisor Carroll?
Aye.
Supervisor Elias?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Supervisor Valdez?
Aye.
Chair Bronson?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Board of Supervisors sitting as the library district board, again, this is truth in taxation and final budget hearings, items 10 and 11 and resolution 2016-LD1. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on this item at this time? If not, what's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
Madam Chair, I'm going to move that we close the truth in taxation public hearing and approve the library district final budget for fiscal year 2016-2017 as described in resolution 2016-LD1.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. And for the record, that budget would be $42,166,526 for a tax rate of .5153. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Carroll?
Aye.
Supervisor Elias?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
No.
Supervisor Valdez?
Aye.
Chair Bronson?
Aye. Motion carries, board of one. We now move on to the stadium district board, final budget hearing, and resolution 2016-SD1. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on this item? If not, what's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
Madam Chair, I'm going to go ahead and move that we close the, well, before I close the hearing, I would like to ask Mr. Huckleberry one question regarding the stadium district budget. We have spent a lot of years painting up our stadium. How much longer are we going to be painting that stadium off just for everybody's edification? Obviously, there's more work and more projects that go on in the stadium district other than just paying for the stadium, but I think it's an important issue for us to make sure the public understands completely. Thank you, Mr. Huckleberry.
Yes, Madam Chair and Supervisor Elias and members of the board, I think one year.
Is that what you said? We're down to one year. With that, I'm going to move that we close the public hearing.
Did you happen to notice Tom Burke's side really? You could hear it all the way up here.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Supervisor.
I'm going to move to close the public hearing and approve this year's stadium district final budget for 2016-17 and as described in resolution 2016. final budget for 2016-17 and as described in resolution 2016 SD1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, and that amount is $5,398,439. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Carroll?
Aye.
Supervisor Elias?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
No.
Supervisor Valdez?
Aye.
Chair Bronson?
Aye. Motion carries four to one. We now move on to the final budget hearing, adopt debt service final budget for the year 2016-2017. This is a hearing. What's, anybody in the audience that wishes to address us on this item at this time?
Ma'am Chair.
If not, what's the pleasure of the board? Supervisor.
Seeing no one come forward to address the board regarding the debt service budget, I move that we close public hearing and adopt a debt service final budget for fiscal year
In the amount of $115,455,401 for a tax rate of .7000. I'll second. There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Supervisor Carroll?
Aye.
Supervisor Elias?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Supervisor Valdez?
Aye.
Chair Bronson?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. That brings us now to be back to the regular meeting agenda. Item 14, which is executive session, has been withdrawn. We do, however, on the addendum agenda, have one item. I entertain a motion moving to accept. I'll second. Any objections? If not, we'll convene and exact and reconvene in regular session at the sound of the gathering.
You should be relative quick. I don't know, depends on what kind of deal.
Once again, good morning. We're back in regular session. We remind everybody we have one executive session item. Item two on the addendum agenda, we decided we would pursue in regular session, so we have one that left us with one item consent.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Item three on the addendum is an executive session item for two cases related to Rosemont line. One relates to Pima County's livelihood, the other concerns the 401 permit. County attorney seeks direction on whether to accept Rosemont proposed settlement offer.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Ma'am Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
Ma'am Chair, I move that we proceed as we discussed in executive session with the county attorney in terms of settlement regarding the Rosemont. I guess they submitted a request to us.
And we reject the offer.
We're rejecting the offer, yes, and we proceed as discussed in executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any objections?
Ma'am Chair, object.
One objection. Any further objections? Hearing now, motion carries four to one. Okay, then we are now looking at, back to the regular agenda. We are looking at board of supervisors sitting as the board of supervisors in item 17...15. Flood, I forgot flood control. Okay, sorry Suzanne.
Ma'am Chair.
Supervisor.
I'll go ahead and move items 15, repairing habitat mitigation plan related to 3345 West Valencia Road, and I'll also go ahead and move item 16, library district board contract with Jenny Bright, amendment number one.
Motion and a second to move outside agency items 15 and 16, repairing habitat mitigation and a library district board contract. Objections? Hearing now, motion carries. Now we'll move on to the board of supervisors sitting as the board and the consent calendar. Does anybody wish to divide the question on the consent calendar?
Ma'am Chair.
Supervisor.
Hearing nobody interested in dividing the question, I'm going to move consent as published in our meeting agenda.
Sir.
Motion and a second. Any objections? Hearing now, motion carries. Moving on to item 18, outside agency advisory committee. These are the funding recommendations as amended. I remind everybody, there was amendments and Tucson Pima County Historical Commission for $87,500, Arizona San Antonio Desert Museum for $49,000, Southern Arizona Children's Advocacy Center for $72,561. What's the pleasure of the board on this side?
Ma'am Chair.
Supervisor.
We did hear from a speaker during the call to the audience about our outside agency committee and the agencies that do this work, and we certainly appreciate them and honor them for the work that they do to complete the mission of Pima County out there in community. Very important to all of us. Mr. Huffman was very eloquent in his appreciation for the members of the committee that are appointed by the board of supervisors. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and move item 18, outside agency advisory committee funding recommendations as amended.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Objections? Hearing now, motion carries unanimously. Who's all here and that is interested, I'm just curious, in outside agency? Who is here for outside agency? Thank you all for coming, thank you for all the good work that you do. Thank you all for coming, thank you for all the good work that you do. Okay, uh, let's see. We are now going to move to. Going to the water room. Yeah, we're going to elections. See who won the lottery. Item nineteen, division of election pursuant to ARS section sixteen, four-six-four B, drawing for the ballot position of candidate names for the contested positions of Green Party Precinct Committee men for precincts forty-three, one forty-three, and two forty-three, two forty-six. Election staff is present here to draw. So ads gonna move through the drawing?
Do we test it?
What precinct are we doing in? Forty-three. Now is that okay, guys? We're letting him do it?
I'll do it if you want. I'm obviously.
Marita J. Gross. And second, Elizabeth Hubbard. Okay. And that was precinct forty-three? Yes, ma'am.
Democracy of work, right?
For one forty-three, Cindy Tool. And David Croto. Oh, we've got gender benefits. Okay. And now we're on two forty-six. Mary DeCamp. And second, Ariel Fry. Okay. That concludes the lottery. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item twenty, industrial development authority revolving taxable single family mortgage loan program of twenty-twelve and resolution twenty-sixteen dash thirty-seven. Let's budget the board.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna go ahead and move joint revolving taxable single family mortgage loan program two thousand twelve, tuning resolution two thousand sixteen dash thirty-seven.
Motion and second.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
I would just comment that this is really an effective way to create affordable housing opportunities for low-income people in our community. It's been effective for many years. Those folks have remained in their homes for the most part with fewer than usual foreclosures during the last few years, which is a very difficult time. But in part, it's because of the financing that is put together for this type of program and the experts that we have at the Pima County Industrial Development Authority, who have been doing this work for many years effectively. And I'm proud of the fact that they've been able to help so many families achieve the American dream. I don't, I don't know if any of you noticed, but there was a story in this morning's newspaper about how people of color were disproportionately affected by the foreclosure crisis and how that has really damaged our ability to create wealth in our families. And that's likely to continue for several generations. For several generations because of the damage that was done during the foreclosure crisis by frankly unscrupulous lenders who took advantage of people who were very desirous of being able to participate in the American dream. This is the good guys. These are the good guys. These are the people who are helping honest Americans find a great way to improve their family life. I just felt like saying that because I read that this morning and I thought it was particularly disturbing.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Any further comments, discussion? Any objections? Hearing non-motion carries. Moving on to item twenty-one, revisions to personnel policy. With pleasure of the board on this side.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna move item twenty-one, public personnel policy eight dash one oh seven, special leaves of absence. Okay.
Second. Motion and second. Objections? I object. One objection, any further objections? Hearing non-motion carries, four to one. Moving on to hearings, Board of Supervisors, item twenty-two. This is a hearing, code text amendment ordinance twenty-sixteen thirty-four relating to underage drinking. We have three speakers on the subject. Paul Lovelace. And remind everybody we have three minutes and abide by the rules of spelling. And we have a number of people who are in support of it, but do not wish to speak. Sorry, Paul, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And to the board. We come today just asking that we try to kind of close the loophole to social host ordinance that already exists within Pima County. Upon developing a underage drinking collaborative amongst Pima County with all the prevention providers, which I'd like to take for all their involvement, we found in working with our law enforcement officers, there was a small loophole that resulted in some individuals not being able to held accountable for hosting underage drinking parties when they were in control of the property. Just to tell you about how this impacts our humanity. We have youth, seventy percent of our youth in Pima County reported on the Arizona Youth Survey that they are using, they have used alcohol in the last thirty days. Seventy percent. And amongst those seventy percent, sixty-eight percent said that they actually got their alcohol from a party that was being hosted by someone else. And so sixty-eight percent of our, seventy percent of our youth that are using alcohol are getting it from parties. And hopefully this will be able to discurr them, individuals from hosting those parties in the future. I just ask that you help us and try and close these loopholes and make sure that we make Pima County a safe place for all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. And thank you for chairing the Pima County Community Prevention Coalition. Amy Bass. Thank you for all the work you're doing in the matter.
Thank you so much. Thank you Supervisor Bronson and all of our Pima County Board of Supervisors for allowing us to speak today. My name is Amy Bass. I am the project director for the Pima County Community Prevention Coalition that operates through Posidere Behavioral Health. And if you may recall, back in two thousand seven and then for the county in two thousand nine, we were able to pass what is known typically as the social host ordinance. It is permitting or encouraging underage drinking. We were very pleased to pass that. It's been a useful tool for law enforcement across the states in jurisdictions where it is available to curb underage drinking and the consequences that we know ensue from that. And when we wrote the amendment or the ordinance to be approved, the wording was such that anyone of legal drinking age that provides alcohol to minors, well, that is of course twenty-one. And somehow this leaves the gap that Paul spoke of, of individuals eighteen to twenty. And so this ordinance that we pass becomes primarily ineffective when they arrive at an underage drinking party. Now that this one got it, that one got it. And there's really no holding accountable under this ordinance if the provider of the alcohol is eighteen, nineteen, or twenty. So we looked and we saw that several states had worded it a little differently. A person who exercises control or in Colorado, no social host. In Connecticut, no person having possession of or exercising domain over any dwelling or property. So you can see that it was probably just in era that we didn't close that loophole. So that's what we're asking to do today, to make this ordinance truly effective for law enforcement to prevent underage drinking and its consequences that affect our youth in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally Wendy Desal. And I know I mangled your name.
Thank you for being here. We talked about the ordinance and the error that was made and that.
So pronounce it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dassal.
Dassal.
Like Dassal at the Heinz. Oh, thanks for that.
Thank you.
So, so we always talk about the loophole that exists and the wording of the law. I'm gonna talk a little bit to the face of the issue because we know that prevention, I've been preventing for almost thirty years, that the younger adolescent starts drinking, the more serious problems they may have later on in life. The longer we can forestall someone drinking past the age of twenty-one, the better chance they have of not having difficulty with alcohol. So this law is just gonna close that gap up so that those people who are under the age maybe would start a little bit later. Maybe they'll think twice because they will be called accountable for providing alcohol to people under twenty-one. So it's, to me, it's a no-brainer. So if you can help us with this, that would be great.
Thank you. Hope it's a no-brainer to us too. With pleasure of the board on this side.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor. Oh, let me just say, we have several others, just let me mention them. Manuel Abriel, Karen McGarrettie, and Jamal Givens are all in support of the ordinance. Thank you all. Supervisor.
Yes, Madam Chair. You know, this is an important item that I think I put on originally when it came up in front of the Board of Supervisors. And unfortunately, we did make an error. But I think it was a well-intentioned proposal that serves us all well to make sure that our kids are protected the best way we can at parties from people who don't always exhibit good judgment about who should share alcohol. And it's tragic because horrible things happen when you mix those, those things together, underage people and outlandish drinking parties. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and move item twenty-two and ordinance twenty-sixteen dash thirty-four.
And close public hearing.
Close public hearing.
Motion and second.
I would also comment that our community coalition.
You're all stand up and be very.
They've been so brave, yeah. Please stand up. We should give them a round of applause because the work they do is really incredible. These are folks who believe in protecting our children and protecting our, our place where we live. And I'm real proud to even be associated with you all from time to time. Thank you for your work.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing non-motion carries unanimously. Moving on to franchises, license, and permits. These are hearings. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak at this point? If not, I would note that in item twenty-four, we've got a sheriff's report. We have several fireworks permits and as usual, we hope that, we're in fire season and we would hope that in terms of these permits, that obviously we have some issues with fire that they would, the individuals seeking these permits would work in conjunction with the correct fire department and make sure we stay safe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Seeing no one come forward, I'd go ahead and make a motion to close public hearing and approve items twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. Noting the sheriff's report associated with item number twenty-four. And again, asking that those fireworks permits that we might approve here in a second work together closely with the fire, appropriate fire districts. I realize that it's the Ajo Gibson Fire Department putting on the fireworks display in Ajo and.
And in an open pit mine.
Yeah, normally they dump some into open pit mines. So some of the fire danger is somewhat reduced. However, you know, the risk of.
And I invite you to jar me for that celebration.
You know, you're always trying to get me to go down there. I'm not sure if the sausage shop is still in operation.
Oh, yes, always.
Bring me some bratwurst. No, I'm just kidding. With that, that's my motion.
Motion and second, any objections? Hearing non-motion carries. Moving on to development services, item twenty-seven. This is a hearing modification, substantial change of rezoning conditions. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address some opposition to this item at this time? If not, with pleasure of the board. Supervisor.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. I spoke to Chris Poirier about this item and I can see that Tom Juszkowski is here on the item.
You pronounced his name correctly, thank you.
It's an easy one. When you're from Chicago, that thing rolls right off your tongue. The, Mr. Juszkowski, is there any, any comments before this goes to a motion that you may want to make?
No, no, no new changes in the last few weeks.
Thank you very much. This is an interesting piece of property. Obviously, in Corona Day Tucson, we had golf course that went back to the lenders and then back into some tax lanes. But in the end, someone just found a way to use some of these lots. So I congratulate the creativity and I'd like to go ahead and close the public hearing and modify, a modification with substantial change of rezoning conditions at CO-nine dash six-three dash oh-six, Corona Day Tucson, number five rezoning requested by Tucson Rubberized Coatings.
Second.
Applicable with special conditions, subject to special standing condition.
Second. Any objections? Hearing non-motion carries. That concludes our regular agenda. Oh, the here is the transportation, I did. All right, moving on to items twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty. These are hearings and resolution twenty-sixteen thirty-eight, ordinance twenty-sixteen thirty-five, and ordinance twenty-sixteen thirty-six. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this on item, or any of these three items at this time? If not, it's gonna be close public hearing and proofless.
Second.
Motion and second. Any objections? Hearing non-motion carries. Now we need to be able to figure that out. And we've done item one. We, item two at the board's unanimous decision that we would not hear this in executive session. So at this point, I wanna take item two and five and six since they're all related. Five and six. Yeah. What supervisor?
Madam Chair, I would suggest that we maybe move, move that we approve item five and six simply because they're relevant to the discussion in executive session.
So you're moving for a waiver of the attorney-client privilege? And then you're moving to immediate release provisions of documents requested by the local media, unredacted?
Is that what it says?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
I, I, I'll second the motion to provide us an opportunity to speak to the items.
Okay, fine.
But, but in all case, I wish that we would, would separate the two items and approve the waiver of the attorney general, of the county attorney's opinion. Just gave a promotion of whatever it didn't mean to. And then proceed with a healthy discussion about item number six and what it means.
Just so we're clear, let me, let me draw the previous motion, move that we approve item number five. Thank you, Supervisor.
Second.
There's motion and second to waive attorney-client privilege for the June ninth memo. Are there any objections? Hearing non-motion carries. What do you ask, supervisor?
I would like to request that the, the June ninth memo be read into the record.
Is Ms. Fryer available or?
I can see her.
Yeah, do you have a memo with you?
I do.
Please read it into the record.
Test my reading skills. Yes. This memo is dated June ninth, twenty sixteen. To Supervisor Ally Miller with copies to all members.
And your voice is lovely, but it's a little low. We need a little, little more volume.
Little bit.
Little more volume.
Okay. To Supervisor Ally Miller with copies to all members of the board. The subject is provision of document for public records request made by the Arizona Daily Star. Our office received a copy of the latest response from Joel Ferguson from the Arizona Daily Star regarding the request for thirty-five cents per page and his threat of legal action if the records are not produced electronically at a significantly reduced cost. Per N, I.D., the cost of a computer disk. Close per N. Mr. Ferguson points to Lake versus City of Tucson, twenty-two Arizona five forty-seven, two thousand nine, for the provision of electronic records must be produced electronically. Excuse me, for the proposition that electronic records must be produced electronically. In Lake, the Arizona Supreme. In Lake, the Arizona Supreme Court held that records are to be produced in their native format. For emails and Facebook pages, the ruling requires the records to be produced electronically, including the metadata associated with the creation of the records. Fortunately, the request for the records of your office did not request the metadata. That would complicate matters significantly. The court in Lake did not, however, specifically deal with the necessity of redacting personal or confidential information from such records, but the request from the Arizona Daily Star and other media outlets that the records be provided electronically is not unreasonable, particularly when the clerk's office has the ability to scan the redacted records and produce them on a disk at a much lower cost than paper copies. Footnote 1. Footnote 1 is, I have confirmed with Robin Brigaud that her office is willing to do this for you. Going back to the body of the memo, there are important distinctions in the public record statutes that give guidance as to whether it is appropriate to charge for the costs of redacting records in addition to the cost for making the final copy. ARS Section 39-121.01, Paragraph D1, allows the government to charge a certain fee for non-commercial purposes. A footnote to non-commercial is, the courts have held that news reporting is not a commercial purpose. The statute is enquited, "Any person may request to examine or be furnished copies, printouts, or photographs of any public record," et cetera, "or may request that the custodian mail a copy of any public record not otherwise available on the public body's website to the requesting person. The custodian may require any person requesting the custodian mail a copy of any public record to pay in advance for any copying and postage charges." Emphasis is added to copying and postage charges. On the other hand, ARS Section 39-121.03 allows additional charges for records produced for commercial purposes, including reasonable fee for the cost of time, materials, equipment, and personnel in producing such reproduction, in that quote, "materials" in producing is emphasized. There is a strong argument to be made that had the legislature intended to allow public bodies to charge for the costs associated with the process of redacting public records to protect privacy interests and confidential information. It would have included the ability to recoup not only the cost of the copies provided to the requester, but also the costs associated with producing the final released record. In fact, in Media America Corporation versus Phoenix Police Department, 1993 Westlaw 540485, the Miracopa Superior Court said that ARS Section 121.01, Paragraph D1, required the requester to, quote, "pay only copying costs and only when a copy is in fact requested," end quote. The footnote to that says, "The fee being sought in this case was only $111.75." Back to the body of the document, the memo, the Phoenix Police Department argued that because the documents had to be redacted in order to allow even public inspection, the making of that redacture was a functional equivalent of requesting a copy, even if no copy was ever provided. The court acknowledged that redacting records, quote, "involves countless additional resources beyond the small copying fee," end quote, and footnote indicating that this was from a footnote in the opinion itself. And then it says, "Because this case is not in appellate court ruling, it is not the final word on the situation, but it is very instructive in where courts are likely to go in a challenge." Back to the body, contemplated by the, let me go back to the quote of meeting the footnote for you. "Involves countless additional resources beyond the copying fee contemplated by the statute, but nonetheless, held that only the cost of the copy actually given to the Requester was subject to the per-page fee. In light of statutory language, the court ruling set forth here and in countless other cases, and the fact that once redactions are made, the county has the ability to scan pages and produce them electronically at a very small cost to both the government and the Requester, we believe that you would not be likely to prevail in court if you continue to insist on providing paper copies at 35 cents per page. If the star is successful in a lawsuit, which is more likely than not, it will also be entitled to attorney's fees and other legal costs incurred in bringing the legal action." That's pursuant to ARS Section 39-121.02, Paragraph B. These fees and costs can be substantial. That ends the memo.
Thank you, Ms. Fryer. All right. We're then soon now moving on to Item 6. I had asked that this item be put on the agenda today because I have been, and many of you also, copied on various requests from the media, usually directed to the clerk of the board, and I became increasingly concerned of the potential risk liability to the county if we did not comply, which is why I put this item on for discussion. So what's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Carol.
First, I want to say that I, like you, have been contacted by members of the media and let the record show that there's members of the Tucson Weekly, the Arizona Daily Star, two reporters, I believe, Tucson Sentinel, all here in attendance today.
Channel 4.
At Channel 4. Is there anyone else that I'm missing that's a member of the media that has inquired about these public records? If not, then let me get right into a question I have. I guess it's a tie for me to ask the question, or do we have?
We could have a motion. We, I put it on for discussion. Yeah, I put it on for discussion, and then we can act, because I want to ask you.
Is there a possibility that we can ask questions to the reporters that are here? That's my question first and foremost.
This is not a hearing, per se, but it's at the board's discretion. What's the pleasure of the board?
I don't know. If members of the press are willing to clarify their requests or any questions that a supervisor might ask, I don't have a problem with that. You guys willing to talk to us in that type of setting?
Our public records requests are public records, and I'm perfectly willing to talk about mine.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just, we just had a reading of Mr. Ferguson's request, but the question I have right off the bat is pertaining to some of the records that have been released. And in fact, I have a question regarding Tim DeHarlay's email for District 1. We understand that it took several weeks for anyone to get in from IT to look at what was on his computer. Can that be confirmed with anyone from IT? And why did it take three weeks?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Carol, it was a combination of things. It was when we got the request, when we were given the approval to move forward with the request, and when we were able to set up time with Supervisor Miller's office.
Okay. You got the request from the media or from Supervisor Miller's office? Which was it?
Actually, from the clerk of the board.
The clerk, very good. Thank you very much on that. Now, lo and behold, by the time that you got there, things were erased. There's no history, none of Mr. DeHarlay's input on his computer. It seemed, the word used by some reporters is it was scrubbed. Is that something that you'd agree with?
I would not.
You would not? Can we get backup from that three-week period that seems to be unavailable currently, but might be under the suspicion of some of these reporters, still somewhere in our system?
We looked, there was nothing there.
And you'll allow the reporters to look and confirm that there's nothing there?
Supervisor Carol?
Yes, sir.
Could I interrupt you for just a second?
Please do. I'm an expert in this stuff.
Mr. Rodriguez, you responded negatively to Supervisor Carol about it being scrubbed, and I understand that, and I respect your opinion, you're an expert, but how would you describe it?
I think what we were able to, I don't know how much I can share, is a public hearing.
Speak freely. This is a public hearing, and this is a place where we are always transparent with the public. That's why we're having this.
Anything left out of today will have to come back up later, so please share as best you're able.
So the way our systems work, whatever you put on your local machines is really not all that relevant. We have what is called a U-drive. All information that is being kept on your machine is also being kept on our county servers. So therefore, any information that is held in a computer, we still keep because we produce backups of that information on a nightly basis. We actually can keep that information for up to approximately 90 days, sometimes up to 120, depending on how we, when the backup process originated. So any information that might exist on the individual's computer cannot really be erased. So that's the first part of my answer. The second part of my answer is that when an individual goes through using the web browsers, when they finish the, when they close the browser, the cookies and all of those things do go away. We clean those off. However, anything done while you were using a browser in the county, we also track through a backend system called WebSense. So we can actually tell you where, which websites you went to, from what computer you went to them, on how you, what login information you had on the county side, not on the other side, we can't track that, but we're able to also detect that information. So any, anyone trying to hide anything that they're doing would not be, simply would not be possible.
Thank you. I think the other issue, and again, I apologize if you'll let me just, I think there are two issues. There are the county computers, but then, I think if I understood the press correctly, they were also interested in the personal computers and personal devices of the, of our offices as it related to Tim DeJarley, handheld devices, phones, et cetera. And we, you do not have the ability to track those, do you?
That is correct. We, since they're not a county-owned device, not only do we not track it, but unless we had a court order, we would not be able to ask the individual to allow us access to their personal phones and equipment.
So you think you need a court order in order to do that? Let me ask our counselor then, that as I understand it, that the request of the media was both for county devices as well as personal devices that were used in the pursuit of county business. What's the county's position in terms of trying to comply with the request of media regarding the personal?
Madam Chair, anyone who chooses to do county business on a personal device, you know, takes a risk. So that information that's on a personal device that is county business is subject to the public records laws. There's various ways of dealing with that in terms of policies and so forth. It depends on the organization. I don't think county has really addressed this in its policies. Some entities like our office, we try to forbid employees from doing county business on personal devices for precisely this reason. We don't want this stuff being outside of our office or outside of our control. If it happens that an individual uses a private device for county business, you've basically got two options. One is you can, you can ask that individual to turn over the device and do your own analysis of the device if the person's willing to give it to you. The other is you can ask that person for the information that's on the device and have them get it off the device to their own means and provide you with that information. That information does belong to the county. If there's county business sitting on someone's private device, those documents belong to the county. So you have a right to ask for that. It's very difficult if the person refuses to do anything, as he says, absent a court order. The Supreme Court of the United States came out with a case in the last few years saying that law enforcement wants to look at cell phone, they need a warrant because of the kind of information that's on a cell phone these days. It used to be law enforcement routinely took cell phones, they were able to download cell phones, but now, given that the wealth of information that's on a typical cell phone nowadays, it's like a personal computer, they need a warrant to get into that information. So if the employee, absent some policy, I mean, the county could have a policy that says, you know, all its employees are required to turn over a personal device upon request if they have county business on it. I don't think this county has such a policy. So it's a difficult situation we find ourselves in if there is stuff on personal devices.
Okay.
To that point.
Okay, go ahead.
Madam Chair, Mr. Weaver, if we come across a situation where county or former county employers use personal devices to conduct county business, obviously, my question is this: Are we, as the entity, responsible for them trying to seek that information, or is that individual and his or her private capacity then liable?
Well, the way it works is Robin would ask that individual to turn over the information or the device. If they refused, then I don't, I don't know that that, it depends on the status of that personal individual. Like Mr. DeJarley now is no longer a county employee, so there's even further limited control over him. So I don't know that he would be liable with the public records laws. He may have, if he has public records on a personal device, and he has either destroyed those records or he has improperly maintained them, there are potential criminal sanctions for those things, but that would have to be investigated and developed.
In a personal capacity or in an official capacity?
Well, criminal only applies in his personal capacity, so if he has destroyed public records that should have been maintained, or he has not maintained records that should have been maintained, both of those are subject to criminal sanctions.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr., go ahead, Joseph. Mr. Rodriguez.
Chair Bronson, members of the board, one of the actions that we're also taking to try to address this very issue, and we're in the process right now...
Which issue are you addressing?
The idea of using a personal device to do...
County business.
County business. We are moving away from the ability to what we used to call BYOP, bring your own device, to a policy where if you have the need to have a, say, a cell phone, the county will provide you that cell phone, and we will control all aspects of the use of that cell phone. So for instance, any things that you may be looking at using a web browser, any emails that you may have gotten on that phone, any documents you may have placed, we would be able to track all of that information and provide you or any other entity that had a legal reason for that information, we would be able to provide you with that.
But the reality is that policy does not exist today.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor. And then I think...
Madam Chair, when it comes to the personal devices, remember, I have been following this story, not as an expert in computers, but it's a political story, which is intriguing, obviously, to those, even those not running for public office at this time, okay? This deals with the media. I have been responding to Freedom of Information Act requests since I came on the board. It's very simple. I have a question when it comes to your cooperation and Mr. Weaver. What, if a board member is not turning over the records requested, are they putting the county in jeopardy of a lawsuit that we cannot win after Karen Fryer's explanation? These are necessary, whether they're in the personal or... These are necessary, whether they're on your personal or they're, they're on your county emails. If we can't win, what is our liability? What are we gonna pay, plaintiff's lawyers? These, these media groups are not bluffing. We have a pro bono group that represents media that is threatening a lawsuit. I believe that they're not bluffing. Okay, Mr. Weaver, Mr. Weaver, what's our liability, what could cost the taxpayers?
I think that's a question for Mr. Weaver.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Carroll. The primary means for a private requister enforcing their right to these records is through a civil lawsuit. And if they file a lawsuit, they can challenge any improper redactions to release documents. So if they see documents that have been released to them and they're not happy with the redactions that they see, they can challenge those redactions and have a judge decide whether they're appropriate or not. They can also challenge items that have wrongly been withheld. So if there's something that they believe they were entitled to, that they didn't get it at all. Uh, never mind that it was redacted or not, they just didn't get it, period. Uh, those things can be challenged in a civil lawsuit and also, um, the county can be liable for damages for failing to release those documents as well as attorney's fees to the successful party.
Which actually brings up, you bring up a point in your, in your response. I think the other, the other issue that, um, was brought forward by the media was related to our policies vis-à-vis redaction and who does the redaction. We don't have a very cohesive policy that I'm aware of and certainly not exists today. And that's, that I think, as we continue this discussion, needs to be dealt with too. You know, who should do the redacting and what can or cannot be redacted? I know my office is not clear on that. We get public records requests. The only thing we try to do is protect individuals' privacy, but how far we can go in protecting that privacy, or whether we can or cannot, I, I really don't feel I have a handle on. So, again, we...
Madam Chair.
Our redaction policies are lack, are not as rigorous, I think, as they should be.
I agree, and, and I think it's an area of vagueness that, um, in discussions with Dylan Smith from the Tucson Sentinel, I know he's expressed concerns about that with me before, and, and I think it is something that needs to be straightened out definitively by us. But then again, I always cite on the issue of public records being public. So, uh, I believe that frankly, materials should be made available on our site, completely unredacted.
I agree.
So that the press knows that we have a policy... What, Mr. Rodriguez?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Elias. There are certain types of information that must be redacted. So for instance, social security numbers.
I understand that.
Uh, anything related to HIPAA, those things?
No, I get that.
We get that, we get that, thank you. That's a, that's a good clarification to what I was saying. But nonetheless, you get the gist is exactly what I'm saying. That questions of, you know, people's email addresses and stuff like that should not be redacted. If those materials are available to the press on our site at any given time. I think that's an important distinction we need to make, because that is in fact what public records are supposed to be.
Well, someone could probably provide some insight, and I think this is a policy discussion, and we need to have someone review it and come to us with recommendations. But I think our library, um, probably has dealt with this whole issue of privacy, because that's public access to public computers. So, I'm sure, uh, Melinda or Mr. Van Tees can, can shed some light on this down the road for us, but, uh...
Right, and, and we've also seen that set aside on behalf of the Patriot Act. From time to time in this country, and it just got re-up... Well, last year, that deeply affects our library policy. So, so, you know, I'm not so sure that I agree with any of that too. Quite candidly, but...
Supervisor, yeah, Supervisor Miller has.
All right.
Not the constitutional genius. You know, I, I, I think what has become really very clear in this discussion is that our current policy stinks. More importantly, it doesn't work.
It doesn't exist.
It exists, and it's just very poorly drafted. I think it's time that we go through and actually come up with a very realistic process. And I think we probably need to direct the administrator, the county attorney, and the clerk to start developing a very realistic policy. Obviously, uh, with, uh, issues such as time limits, uh, who redacts, who can request, all, all these things need to be in the policy. So it's very, very clear. Um, because I think, uh, what, what this has pointed out is a failure in, in our existing policy. The... Obviously, that's gonna take a little bit of time, and, and so in the, in the meantime, I think we need to take an action, and not a knee-jerk reaction that's gonna get us into trouble in the future. Uh, I would suggest that what we do at this point, uh, is that we direct staff, as, as I outlined in my comment a few moments ago, to come up with a realistic policy. And in the meantime, in the meantime, until that policy is adopted by this board, uh, I suggest that we have Mr. Our CIO get together with county attorney, come up with legal criteria of what can and cannot be redacted. Then direct the, uh, the clerk to use that criteria in the redaction of requested materials until such time as we come up with that policy. And that's, uh, that this material be made available in as soon as, as soon a period as possible. Uh, do we have any idea from staff how long that might take?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller has. Currently, there are no pending redaction emails made, the ones that we just received five days ago. So currently, all of the requests.
And then obviously, let's, uh, let's say that, that if there are any issues between particularly elected officials and what is being redacted, this board will take those actions until such time as the policy is developed.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Okay, I wanna actually, go ahead, and I'd like to hear from the press, um, at least some members.
Well, I was gonna second that motion, but...
Yeah, go ahead and second the motion.
I was gonna second the motion for a purposeless discussion, and I'd also like Supervisor Miller to please consider including members of the press in the development of that policy. Because I think that we've had some great knowledge put together by Dylan and Joe and Jim and all your work, and so we appreciate that and wanna put it to work so that we get things right this time. Uh, for the record, the, make your decision, please. Thank you, thank you very much, I was Supervisor Bronson.
Yeah, let me get just the clarification, and then Supervisor Carroll. Um, you know, I, I had hoped that we would just ask the clerk to comply with the requests of the media and release all the information requested, um, immediately without redaction. That would be my preference, but that's not your motion. I think that the other piece here is we still are dealing with the private devices.
Right.
And so, that, that has not been addressed to date. So, for purposes of discussion, I don't know how you wanna work that in.
Well, maybe if, if we amend my motion to make sure that the, the previous staff members and the press come up with a procedure to deal with the pri, the usage of private devices.
But that doesn't, that's down the road in terms of policy. What about today and the requests today and the honor and the requests that have been made today?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
I would ask, I, I, I kind of agree with you in the sense that, uh, given the fact that our policy is weak, and, and admittedly so, let's make sure that we are responding in kind to the media's request and the public's need for private information or public information. And make sure that as quickly as possible, all the requests that are currently on the table are be responded to here on grounds as completely unredacted information. We're not turning it over to the press, but we will be making it available to them to show goodwill, to show we're on the right side of things, to show that transparency still matters to the board of supervisors.
I, I agree, and let me, let me address that point. I do agree that it needs to be responded, requested. Um, but where I am concerned is there, uh, for example, there are attorney-client privileged information in that. There are other things that need to be redacted.
Oh, wow.
Now, we went down. That wasn't divine intervention. We just tried to... Can we, can we, let's see with the... I don't know if there's any record on mine here, but... That's the problem.
Yeah, because we have no power. We're changing the court. Quiet, quiet. Oh, okay. Yeah. Is it called click the center? No. They've got the air crane because of the water. That's what I'm gonna just think. It's like, yeah. Yeah. I'm gonna call everybody.
Yeah, I heard the announcement, it's easy to hear, that's what, that's what...
But around that. That's in the wine country. I wish we could have extended it more. It's the truth.
It's funny, I, I landed in the 122. Actually, I dropped two. I delivered from Chicago, you know, this was, this was the record. It was 122. I know. Well, I traveled the primary country. This is there. Oh, well, perhaps it was the record for that eight. It has been sent from this. But if it was... No, it had to be.
The common method in terms of this discussion, uh, is as it relates to private devices. And I think there's a similar solution. Supervisor Miller, are you willing to provide that information on those devices to comply with the request?
Madam Chair, I will provide any records that are related to county business. And we have today, upon your private devices. Any records that are related to private business whatsoever will be provided.
County, county business.
To county business, I'm sorry, will be provided.
Madam Chair.
An electronic form is requested?
Um, as people may or may not know, we have provided almost seven thousand pages of documents. Our first request came in on May twentieth. It has taken us approximately thirteen point seven business days on average to turn around these. We have a few more to complete. We've gotta provide our Facebook and Twitter account. Um, and those will be provided in any public or any county business. On my, on my personal, you know, I can't speak for other people in my office, obviously. I can't control their personal devices. But anything that I have on my personal devices will be turned over.
Madam Chair.
Um, thank you Supervisor Miller.
That was, that was very clear for what I think is the question on that. Madam Chair and Supervisor Miller.
Madam Chair, I am not gonna be interrogated by Supervisor Carroll. I've answered the question. I said I will provide any and all records that are related to county business.
That's clear.
Way to go. Thank you, that's, that's... But I'm, I'm not, I was gonna say, in all due respect, uh, I've had information from the press, they've shared with me as of this morning, as of yesterday, as of going back all the way to May eighteenth, I think was the first request. And the first request comes from your local independent online news service. I think that, uh, they're not a partisan group. This is not some trumped up attack by the Tucson Sentinel. They've sent me information requesting, um, my emails, et cetera. I've provided them to them. But the response came back that they believe, and other media sources as well, and I have the, it's not, it's not an interrogation, it's just a submittal of evidence, I hope, to show that you are using your personal computers on public business, which is taxpayers paying for things like looking for jobs, or working on your school board campaign, et cetera. All this is already on the record. This has already been collected and has been produced, because simply you missed redacting the emails with your personal addresses on your emails. So I asked Sherri Potter this morning if this is her email, and, and on this page, and it's slpotter-dash-dash-dash, what have you, and her Gmail. And, uh, then I also have Tim's Politics, his personal email here listed. I have, uh, JDFCDC, uh, again, that's Joe M. D. Filippo, who I understand is an employee of Supervisor Miller in District One. And then I have Supervisor Miller's, uh, personal email. All of this is talking about a press release that they were all working on about the ordinance on the medians, which I can show you right here. It's, it's verbatim, folks, and, you know, I got this back from the media because there's an elephant room here. Back in mid-May, Tim Day Harlitt called my office asking to get on my email account to try to get information on how I feel about Supervisor Miller's road plan or any other thing that she'll put on in the public perspective for us to have comments on. I welcome that. That would be fine. Mr. Day Harlitt, AKA at the time Jim Falcon, I don't think he's Jim Falcon, is here this now. But you can confirm that I responded on my email, I've sent it to you. But Sherri, you're welcome to be copied on my newsletters, any comments I might have.
Madam Chair, this is inappropriate to be...
That's not, it's not germane to the issue.
He's a detective, playing Supervisor Miller, trust me.
But, but your particular comment isn't germane to the discussion here.
My comment is germane, because what we have is public time spent on personal issues, and we have personal time on public issues.
That's not the issue at hand. The issue at hand is the documents requested by the media related to Supervisor Miller's employee as it relates to the affairs of the daily hell.
I, I agree. They are asking if this has ever happened. And let me just show you another email that came out.
No, I think, I think that we need to stick to the record.
Oh, and people say they're not using their cell phones or smartphones. I'm telling you, I won't accept that as the truth.
Well, I don't think that anybody has said that today.
And I think the board should not allow any further stonewalling of their micro requests that are being put in. And I think we need to act quickly before we can sue.
There is a, there is a motion on the floor. Supervisor Miller has indicated she will comply with the request from the media regarding conducting county...
But she's stonewalling the employees that she has, employed by her, getting taxpayer dollars to work in her office, that are working on personal things.
Her employees will be asked to comply. I don't think she can particularly speak to each employee, although she has indicated her willingness to ask her employees to comply. I believe that's correct. Is that not correct, Supervisor?
Listen, she's responded to the clerk for the board that they do not have county cell phones and do not use private cell phones, smartphones for private analysis of county business, which is a lie. Because they do, I have heard about that.
Supervisor, this is not court of law. The issue here is the release of the documents. The issue here is the release of the documents.
I am producing, I am producing what I think is an important message to this Board, which is we need to comply with these public requests. We need to stop stonewalling. We need to turn over the information before the recourse that they have hits us for all the costs of a lawsuit and their time. If Supervisor Miller has produced hours and proof of her hours spent, believe me, the clerk of the Board's got plenty of hours as well and days of county workers' time. And these members of the press have spent hours and hours and days of their workforce's time. So I'd like to see it brought to a conclusion. I think this is an embarrassing situation because of one supervisor stonewalling and protecting themselves at the expense of the public trust and the public coffers.
Thank you, Supervisor. I think that there's one other issue that we need to parse a little bit. We have a motion on the floor. I'm going to ask the maker of the motion, since I at this point am not particularly clear on what we're doing, but repeat it so we're clear. But let me, before we ask you to do that, there were some other issues related, I think mostly to the metadata, but that I know a number of the media have been concerned about. And that is the lack of any, only, I think, as it relates to Supervisor Miller's former employee, that there seems to be very little electronic data, whether at the meta-level, available. If there was one day of data, if I recall with the email exchanges, I think Dylan Smith, I think one of those emails came from him. If you would clarify for the record, you are concerned, but I need you to speak into the mic if you're willing to do that.
Certainly. And if you wouldn't mind, I have a couple of other comments, issues I would like to raise in addition to the metadata. A number of our public records requests.
Let the record show Dylan Smith is now speaking.
A number of our public records requests, as well as requests from other media outlets at school and associated media outlets, which other, Arizona Safe Law, as you guys all well know, is part of that public record and must be disclosed when any citizen passes through. Today, I don't think any of the papers that we've been provided sort of... I think we need that. Where is it? When will we be provided? Our first public records request was made on May 18th. We are well past the month. Safe Law requires you to promptly make the information available. Have you been prompted?
I don't think he's going to answer. No.
Do you have any questions? What other prompts?
Yeah, prompt is again...
We are beyond any reasonable interpretative prompt. These are records that would take you five minutes to get them. They are readily available, although I don't know if you could have emailed them. But that really is the least of the issues. A number of the documents that have been gotten have been very oddly, inconsistently, and I think unjustified reacted. There are, some email addresses are blacked out, some are not. There are emails where it would be one email address blacked out in a certain portion, but then included in the clear, insane email. It makes it, I don't understand the justification of blocking any email address. They block something out and pretend that it's from somebody else. You know, I could have written you guys an email saying that Sharon Bronson admits to conspiring to, you know, cover up all of this stuff. And you block out the email and release it to the public. That's what that would look like. I don't think it's appropriate at all to cover up who sends and receives an email to an open office. And do that with all this data? What the heck has been going on? And on the issue of technically Danny R. Lee's browser records, there was one day of his browser history. One day, his last sale of all of his provided files. The other employees in that office had days and days and days and months with the browser. Not only did it take three weeks for the county attorney department to get up there to copy this information, which I don't know why they had to even go up there, but they said they had backups of this readily available. But when we got the information, there was really nothing there. There is other information that we got from his computer, including his cookie files and some of the other plots he ran with the show, that he was indeed using that computer on the internet. We don't know what sites he was visiting and where. And that is, you guys have also the public record. And really, the most important issue is the fact that we have not had any sort of substantive response about the public records that are contained in Supervisor Miller's private email, Facebook Messenger, and other personally operated accounts, and those per se. And yesterday afternoon, I got an email from the board saying that Supervisor Miller said that she, and all but one of the staffers who did not respond, reported that they do not have county issued cell phones or smartphones and do not use their private cell phones slash smartphones or private email accounts for county business. We know that is not true. We have piles of evidence that you used your personal email and Facebook Messenger to exchange cash account business. So I'm asking, not only you and the case, you would turn over this, but when? It's been a month, more than a month, since we asked you for it. When are you going to turn it over?
Madam Chair, this is not a court of law. But I will tell you that we have turned over 7,000 pages. We had to print those out, redact them. And you've already highlighted the fact that we had to do them in a hurry with two people, that things were missed. And then they had to be scanned back then, 7,000 pages. We are working on a final of this piece. And I did talk about Facebook and all of that. And we're going to go through and we're going to make sure we provide record data. But these things take time. And you have to remember, I have one full-time staffer and two part-time staffers. I just got another person hired part-time who's going to be helping us with those requests. But we are working on that. You know, we have board meetings. We're in the middle of budget periods, et cetera. So these things... And the first date that we received the request from the clerk of the Board was May 19th. And it took us 17 business days to respond. And on average, you know, I'm looking at the most days that it took us business days to respond to these requests was 17. And the average was 13.7 days for these three, or excuse me, 7,000 pages of records. So, you know, we're working them and we will be providing them as soon as we're able to get them.
That is information that I asked you for on May 18th and the other ones you... And if you have any other questions that you have to...
Madam Chair, Supervisor.
Madam Chair, Mr. Smith. You've asked all the other board members for Freedom Information Act responses in the past. Have you heard?
I can't say that I've eaten everyone multiple times, but in relation to this, there were requests that were applicable to every supervisor's offices.
And you've received what you requested from those offices, except for Supervisor Miller?
I believe so. Nothing stands out to my recognition that you guys want us to...
I had checked with the clerk in our office and the people in our office at least I can speak for, and plus our staff. I just want to say thank you for your diligence. And I apologize for all these delays. I believe you're being stonewalled for some reason. That's protocol and it's not business. I do believe that the evidence you showed me where employees are using public resources for their personal job hunt campaigns, et cetera, in Supervisor Miller's District One office is true. Thank you for that. And I also think that there's a reasonable assumption on my part that they are using taxpayer-funded dollars to continue to stonewall this media. And that includes the Weekly, the Star, Sentinel, Channel Four, and anybody else. Again, I hope that this does not... She's trying to damage the brand of this...
No, again, let's keep this civil, please.
She's damaging the brand.
I won't comment on the politics of it.
We're here on the policy.
It's not my task to... If you were stonewalling me, I would be writing you just as... That's not what this is about. I'm trying to figure out what's going on. And complaints were filed with the FBI. Allegations that there was criminal activity associated with this supervisor's office. And that kind of raises the stakes to make federal payments on it.
Madam Chair.
Lots of stuff was trumped up, I think I still have the floor. But I want to say again, I appreciate your diligence and those of the other media outlets trying to get to the bottom of this. And I hope that you'll get there as soon as these records can be reviewed.
Well, certainly, I share that hope that we will have access to these records in a very, very timely manner from this point until the time we have our... We don't want to buy a lawsuit and put county staff having to deal with that. There are people that testify. And I think that we have enormous ways to find or gather something to... And shoot, and very easily dealt with in a matter of eight minutes, not a year.
I think you and all the rest of the media that are here are willing to sit with the county administrator, the IT, CIO, and others to see if that can be retrieved, those days of limbo as far as the...
I think that's up to professionals. And I think that certainly they need, the press needs to be put in policy discussion as we move forward on regarding...
Certainly, one of the other reporters are, you know, very interested in seeing that with you guys and having a policy that is both more precise and more streamlined.
Including, I believe, Mary Dan Far, who's the attorney that was referred to on some of your remarks, and others who asked her first. Thank you again. Appreciate your time.
And Supervisor Miller and Supervisor Miller's...
Madam Chair, Mr. Smith, you did provide me with a phone number for Tucson Police Department. And Tucson Police Department has an active investigation and that event for about an hour. We are waiting to hear back from them. So when we hear back from them, that information will be released to the public as well. And the FBI, I had a phone call in and my contact there will be coming into Pima County, hopefully in the near future, and see if there's any new criminal activity. And again, as far as computers and the metadata and the cookies, whatever is on there, I think the IT director was very clear in the fact that I could not hide that information. And they have backups, so they would have all of that information. And I, you know, I hope that he provides you with all of the data. As far as metadata, I assume that is the IT department's responsibility because I don't have any idea how to retrieve that. So I'm not sure why you haven't received metadata. But I think, you know, the clerk of the Board, I don't know if you've received metadata or how that will be retrieved. I heard that question come up. And I certainly don't know how to get metadata for it.
I think that certainly our staff, IT staff can respond to that. We're not the experts there, but we obviously will make available to them if it exists.
There's an email record, if it exists, part of the...
No, again. If it still exists, I mean, I don't know. Life is complicated in the electronic age.
I think Mark files on this, it seems unlikely...
Supervisor Miller does, you know, please.
Madam Chair, my question was, I mean, Mr. Weaver, so...
To me, sir, does it seem likely that there's an employee in a district office that has exactly zero information or input on their computer when they're supposed to be at a county job for the...
Well, there was not zero information, there was plenty of other information indicating that he was using his computer and browsing the web. Only the web history files from the point that we issued requests to the U.S. Very specific days or keywords, but for the email, for the web history we asked for a stretch of time, because that should simply be the information that we have in that file. And we browsed history file, except for his last day of employment, it was non-existent. So the, in my opinion, the only reasonable explanation for that for there being cookies from websites he visited, passwords saved from websites he visited, saved files, you know, the files that he patched in the browser, the images from websites that he had visited, for no browser reason. The only reasonable explanation for that is that's not always reasonable. I can't think of another.
Or they didn't use that device?
Well, he didn't because he wasn't there. There were thousands of other records from his computer indicating he was using it, except for he erased the illicit websites he visited.
Madam Chair, Mr. Smith, or they were using a different device for some of the things you're talking about?
Well, they could be using another device. From his computer in the office, there were other platforms that clearly indicate that he didn't use the browser history.
I know, I get what you're saying.
Madam Chair, I have an urgent appointment that I have to get to. I've got nothing through this by now, but I'm asking you to excuse me. Thank you. Your excuse.
I don't know.
Okay.
I guess that's unusual. I say that...
Let's keep it civil. Let's keep it civil, please. Supervisor Miller.
Madam Chair, I think Mr. Brooks may have had something to add.
No, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Madam Chair, Mr. Weaver. The question I have is a simple one, or several, hopefully, simple questions. If there is, if there are emails or information on personal computers that relate to county business or personal devices, who owns that data? What we have heard two minutes ago is that one of our colleagues has agreed to turn over that data that exists on personal devices. If she does not, what liability do we have there? I mean, she's clearly told us in public, on the record, that she will turn over that information. If she does not, or press can provide information that shows clearly that that information was not turned over, what is the liability?
Well, are you asking how you would enforce that?
Yes.
I think we'd have to look at that statute regarding these things of these of that nature. I'd have to do some research, but there may be an mechanism for what the board takes in.
And how long would that take?
Research for the actual work.
Both.
I could have research within a week.
Okay. I would suggest that you actually do some research. I think...
Are you done Supervisor Miller? You know...
Do you have any more?
No.
Try to answer them, it's okay. But please stay close, that way if we decide to ask you questions, we can...
Yeah, lots of time.
You know? The issue is this, as far as I can see, because we have now created a big cloud of smoke surrounding this thing even worse than we had before. And Supervisor Miller leaving only adds to that. And I don't think we should make this into more of a political thing than it needs to be. But quite honestly, these are public records that are supposed to be available. And as our counsel just offered us, these are records that are ultimately owned mostly by the Pima County Board, supervisors, the people of Pima County. So they need to be released as quickly as possible, whether it's metadata or whether it's genuine, it's records of the truth. Because I don't say that facetiously. We should not operate under the guise that we're aiding and assisting this cloud of smoke that's been created now. Because that just puts us squarely in a very, very, very bad position. This is not a court of law. You're absolutely right. And so we shouldn't be picking apart the issues. Instead, we should be moving forward to offer the greatest amount of clarity that we have available to us to offer. And so with that said, I think we should move forward on the motion that's been made. But we should also make another motion so that it's clear that we are requesting county staff to act on these requests because it sounds to me, and it's become clearer over the course of today, that Supervisor Miller's office is acting on their own. And they should not be. They should be working in concert with the clerk's office and with IT and with the county attorney's office on this, like everyone else does. When they... county attorney's office on this, like everyone else does when they receive a FOIA. Chuck, isn't that standard operating procedure in your office? Do you ever alter that? I don't think you ever have, and I've watched this closely over the last year, the last 14 years that I've been here, because public records is important to me, personally. We have a responsibility to this, you guys, and if somebody's acting in a way that creates us, creates an aura surrounding us, that we're aiding and assisting in that, then I have a major problem with that too. So, I'd say, let's act on the motion, but let's put another motion out there that then defines what this county office needs to do.
What's the motion? Let me see, let's get the motion.
Let's go back to that, and we can continue to talk.
We'll let you, let's get the motion, yeah.
Can I ask my question? I'm sorry that Supervisor Miller has left the desk, I really am. I don't know what that high drama is going to create in perceptions, it doesn't matter to me at this point, all that matters is the truth. And I have one question, trying to get to the truth to Mr. Weaver. And we just heard Supervisor Miller say that she will provide her personal data, I'm not sure where that is right now, but I do want to know from yesterday's, and it was just read by Mr. Smith at the datus here, that Supervisor Miller told the clerk, being Robin Brigault just yesterday, that our office doesn't use personal email to conduct county business. Yet the very email record she's turning over to the media, that was accidentally not fully redacted, proves that she does use personal emails to conduct county business, and I showed you that slip earlier. Now, that's a political problem for the District One office, but it puts the entire board now at risk of a lawsuit, seeking these private email records and these private other records that will be hopefully forthcoming. What recourse do we have as a board to prevent this lawsuit? I don't want to cover up for Supervisor Miller anymore, I haven't been doing that at this point. I want to know how we get to the bottom of this, and can we force her to turn over these records today?
I think she's keeping a forward expectation that she's willing to do so, whether she drives them or not, it's basically seen. It's very difficult to get to the personal devices, I think we've talked about that something great, I mean, you can ask those folks for the devices, you can ask them for the stuff, but absent their cooperation, you're in a difficult spot, and you may just be subjected to a lawsuit, if you'd like.
Can we ask former employees, and we know there's a long list of those?
You can ask.
I've been told that those former employees will also show the evidence, so thank you for allowing me to ask that, thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Supervisor Miller, there's a motion.
Madam Chair, the motion was a multi-part motion. The first one was to get to have the county administrator, the clerk, the county attorney, and the CIO develop a working policy going forward for providing public records requests in timely, prompt, and accurate manner, where apparently we're going to likely have to have a clerk or another office to redact and base them in criteria developed legally in our CIO and county attorney's office. Furthermore, on this particular issue, to go ahead and have that criteria developed by the end of this week, so the clerk of the board can then use said criteria...
Clerk of the Board.
Clerk of the Board, sorry. Clerk of the Board can then use said criteria to redact material from providing in an ultimate format to the press and comply with the requests that have been... And obviously, I offered, or I offered this direction, is we do the research, what we can do is make sure that we are going to pursue that information in its own, by the county, to then turn it over to just a public record. And I believe we also added the press to be committed to be the...
And, you know, I seconded that motion, and again, I support this motion, in part because it deals with some larger issue questions that I think some members of the press have brought up here today, but it also puts us squarely in the position of being on the right side of things, and making sure that all Pima County-owned documents are made available as quickly as we possibly can, in the form that our members of the press have requested. Questions about personal things, personal items, and all of that stuff, still needs to be resolved. But frankly, I think this is a good faith effort on our part to make sure you get information quickly, and that we are willing and ready to change our policies so that they work better for the public and for the members of the press.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. I think we've discussed it. Yes, we are, where our usual discussion takes us. Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing non-motion carries four zero. You wanted a second motion, Supervisor.
No, I felt comfortable with the way Supervisor Miller described his motion, and the imperative of all of us, and when I say all of us, I specifically mean the clerk's office, the county attorneys, and IT, to provide that information that has been requested quickly as possible. I believe we've been talking about the end of the week at this point, so that's three days from now. I think that's reasonable, I hope that works, and we should have that information available to you, and I don't think there should be any great cost attached to it. This issue of $1,100 bills, you know, floating around, is crazy. Dylan, do you want to add something to that?
Yes, but I do.
I need you to speak into a microphone, Tom, maybe you can fly yours over there.
There was one point at which Supervisor Miller... Sorry. There was one point at which Supervisor Miller informed the clerk of the board that she would not even begin redacting or processing any documents until $1 a page was paid for 9,000 pages of documents.
I think our motion today supersedes that.
Thank you.
Glad to start our attempt to do that.
Mr. Huckleberry.
Madam Chair, members of board, I think all, you know, my input into this is, listen to all of the issues, I think it's important that we articulate those somewhat in writing, and then send the appropriate articulation notes to the board to ensure we have a majority of them, and so, because we've got a whole series of issues we've talked about. So, I think the first step to policy development is to basically describe those issues and make sure that we've got them all covered, so we're going, I will do that in consultation with county attorney and clerk.
That's fine, Mr. Huckleberry, I agree with you completely, but I don't think that speaks to the issue that, that's the other part of the motion, that we are going to supply this information as quickly as possible.
I want the clerk to respond, since it's going to be on her to do.
Chair, resident members, everything that we have received to date from central IT for county devices has been turned over, with the exception of the maybe two records requests we received from June 14th to now. I think the things that are in question are the emails, if they exist, from the personal accounts, and that is what, what remains open and the metadata question.
I would defer from that assessment.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Let me do this, let me go back to the executive session, item two, and offer the county attorney direction under the statute of...
We've got a motion on the floor.
Right.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And let me do this, let me make a motion to direct the county attorney that is the official position of this board to fully comply with the publicly directed request outlined in item number two.
I'll second that.
I'll buy it.
Are there any objections?
And, well, I would just comment on this, that this is no reflection on the work that you've done, Robin, and I understand that you have complied and that you've done your best, so I understand that, but I think there's also an issue of the public understanding that this board and its position is to make sure that this information is made available as quickly as possible, because there seems to be this cloud of omission that's voting around up here, and a member of the board who couldn't even stay for this discussion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to...
Supervisor Miller does and Supervisor...
And it is, the reason I make this motion is to make it very, very clear to everyone, as Supervisor Miller has pointed out, that any position that defers from fully complying with this public records request is not the desire of this board, does not represent the wishes of Pima County, and is one person acting in their own and private capacity.
Okay, I think we have one, I really hate to belabor this, but I am, we have one other outstanding issue that I don't think we can address effectively today, but we still haven't dealt, in my view, with the issue of redaction. I know there's concern among members of the press that things were improperly redacted, so I would encourage them, on those particular items they feel were improperly redacted, to make the clerk aware of it, and then I would instruct our staff to fully comply, I know our legal attorney is going to review it, but that we need to, in terms of those redactions, address, address this concern and legally comply.
I agree with Supervisor Barnes, and she's absolutely right, and since we're not going to deal with that...
We're not going to do a whole new redact...
...redaction until we have a new policy, then we need to address the issue that's clouding the world today.
Specific redactions as it relates to this specific point of course.
Please, let me... My point of clarification is this, if we, the motion that we've just adopted, which is previous to the motion that is on the floor right now, very clearly said that the CIO and the county attorney are going to get together, develop the criteria, which the clerk was going to then use to redact the information that she had in her possession, so that they can comply with the issue, it would be a consistent redaction based on that
Is this perspective in terms of stuff that will be exposed subsequent to now? I mean, we're not talking about stuff, we're not talking about anything new that surfaces.
Well, that was intended both to apply to this request and looking forward as to what we're going to use in perspective of this criteria.
Madam Chair, Mr. Ferguson, did you have a question that you wanted to ask? I saw you raising your hand.
I do, and I'm sorry to interrupt.
Please, go ahead.
Supervisor Miller said during a regular interview that she generated 7,000 pages of documents. We are in no way near that number in receipt at this moment. My concern is not only the, when she has redacted documents, but she has cited some documents that are not redacted, we have 6,000 documents that we don't have and never seen, we're concerned about that just as much as redaction. Now, I'm just using Supervisor Miller's words, about how many pages she generated.
Madam Chair, can I clarify the questions, though? Point of clarification, Madam Chair, it is my understanding that the entire record was turned over to the clerk, and so, whatever was turned over from the D1 office, the clerk then has and is going to apply this criteria, so I have a funny feeling you're going to find it wasn't anywhere close to that number.
So, she lied, or she did not give the clerk the information, well, we don't, I don't have any...
We have no way to know.
It's my understanding, and Mr. Rodriguez, you can verify this, the information was originally sent to the clerk, and the clerk then provides that information to D1, which then they use to redact, so she's got the original copy.
That's correct.
Do you have 7,000 pages?
It's difficult to understand, I can tell you how many emails we got, but it's difficult to evaluate how many pages are in an email, so I can't answer.
Okay, you've got everything that Mr. Rodriguez turned over to you, so that exists, if there's something beyond that, no one's out of case.
Well, no, but we're also asking folks to check into that again, and make sure that that information has been handed over, so that, Joe, you at least have some assurance that from documents that we own, you have everything that we have, and that should be, again, by the end of the week, is that what I'm hearing from folks? That's not impossible.
So, Madam Chair and board members, you'd like us, our office, to take the original file, re-redact, or perform redaction on the original file and turn it over?
Get that stuff out, absolutely. That way you have it as quickly as possible, without those costs attached to it, and I, we, none of us can account for, for talk radio and the comments that are made on that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Are there any objections? Hearing non-motion carries. Are we done? Okay, thank you all. We're going to proceed now to, back to our meeting agenda for the agenda, and I'm at seven o'clock in the spring months in the westmost part of the Arizona desert. We did it, we did it. I don't have a broken on the floor. Motion and a second, any objections? Sorry, we almost left you on it. Okay, moving on, item seven, and I'll look at items.
Second.
Motion and a second, any objections? No, no, yes. Let's have a closer look. Motion on second, any objections? Hearing non-motion carries. That concludes our board meeting today. Our next meeting will be July 7th, we will see you then. I'd like to call to order the board supervisor meeting, Tuesday, June 1st, 2016, go for regular meeting, and the special final budget adoption meeting will commence.
Supervisor Earl?
Here.
Supervisor Hughes?
Presenting.
Supervisor Miller?
Here.
Supervisor Miller?
Present.
Chair Burns?
Here.
Like the record show, all members are present.
Please rise for the invocation to be offered by Rev. Huda Setman, Shabab Tucson, with the pledge of allegiance to follow, led by Supervisor Earl.
One of the famous Jewish blessings this college gave a Rechachal. When God gave his blessing to the... When God gave His blessing to the Jewish people, which we continue to recite every Friday and we pass on to our children. When God gave His blessing, the angels asked God, why are you giving this sacred blessing down on earth instead of keeping it up in heaven? And God said, when I see people blessing, how can I not bless them? There's no way that when I see people appreciative of others that I will not appreciate them. However amazing the angels might be in heaven, or down on earth, when we see people relating to each other with respect, love, compassion, how could I not pass on additional blessings to them? So today, to keep it short, I'll share with you this blessing. Yehorechacha Adonai Yishmeracha, may God bless you and protect you. Ya'air Adonai Pana Belecha Bichuneka, may God show His grace upon you and find favor, and find yourself favor in His eyes. Issa Adonai Pana Belecha Yasem Lecha Shalom, and He raise His face to you and put peace unto you. And let us say amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I, of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're now going to, at the invitation and pledge of allegiance, I want to move on to pause for pause, but I want to note, just for the record, a couple of housekeeping pieces, and that is, on the regular agenda, page five, item 18, outside agency advisory committee funding recommendations, they are, there are some amended recommendations. They want to make staff in the board aware of that and that the total general services allocation is now increased to $1,336,386. And then, we, the item on the executive session on the regular agenda, which is item 14, councilor, I believe that we are now asking that that be withdrawn from the agenda, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, so we will, item 14 is withdrawn from the agenda. If there are no objections, then Supervisor.
I would also comment that executive item number two, or item number two on our addendum, an executive item regarding public records requests, I would prefer if we heard this item in public rather than in executive session. This is about public records. Public records are public records, and there should be full disclosure and full transparency. And I would like to see this board agree that we should hear this item in public rather than in executive session.
I would second that if you put it in the form of a motion.
Point of clarification, please, is that tied into regular item on the addendum number five, which is the waiver?
That's correct. So that's a waiver of a specific opinion. This is an executive session for information and direct, for legal advice regarding those same public records. There's a bit of a difference there. Just for clarity's sake and for the public's sake, because I know there are people here to hear that item specifically, I think we should be more transparent and hear that item in front of everybody.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor then to remove that item from executive session. Are there any objections? Hearing none, we'll remove that item. All right, doggy, let's, let's meet our pause for pause. And this is Lady. She's Siberian Husky Labrador Retriever mix, is that correct? Jenny? Jenny is our PAC outreach coordinator.
I'd like to share your model with you as well, very nice.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Very, very, very appropriate.
So this is Lady. Lady is a year old Siberian Husky Labrador Retriever mix. I love her. She has one blue eye, one brown eye, if you can see, which is what attracted me to her today. She's also very outgoing and very inquisitive, although I do think she prefers women to men. She's young, she can learn anything that you want her to, to be.
I don't know if you was looking at the guys in the rabbis.
She, she came to us, her owners could no longer care for her. I think they may have gotten her as a young puppy. She was outdoor and she started getting into mischief because she was bored. So she needs somebody to teach her some manners and give her some time. She'd do really, really well in an active family because she's so young. She wants to play and she wants to walk and she wants to be with people. And she's just a really, really sweet girl. She has not been spayed yet, but that is included in her adoption fee, which is $30, and then $16 for the license. That also includes the microchip and she'll be current on her vaccinations. So Lady is, is ready for a home and tell everybody you know about her because she's very, very sweet. We are located at Silver Bell and Sweetwater, which is just a little bit north of Grant Road. Our shelter hours are noon to seven, Monday through Friday, and 10 to 5 on the weekends. And you can find her online at www.pima, oh, I can't even remember our website, pimaanimal, pima.gov slash animal care, yeah. So Google us. I also want to mention this weekend.
I do on Facebook.
Yes, I do. And I think we do Twitter now, so you can find us everywhere on social media. We are also helping, there's an event on Saturday. It's called Love Your Pup. We're getting ready for the Fourth of July. The Fifth of July is a really busy day at Pima Animal Care because of all the animals that are frightened by the fireworks. So on the Saturday, the 25th, from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Tucson Expo Center, which is down on Irvington and I-10, we'll be doing, we're coming up with the Humane Society in the city of Tucson, and we'll be offering free rabies shots and free microchipping. The Humane Society will also be providing low-cost vaccinations, the DAPP, which is for parvovdestemper, for $6, and there'll be resources for free and low-cost neutering available there as well. We'll be there to license any of the animals that are altered. The license fee is $16, and for a city of Tucson residents, if they participate, the city will waive the late fee if they're late on their license. There is a higher cost for licenses if the dogs are unaltered. So please tell everybody to come out and get their animals microchipped and vaccinated and get their licenses up to date if they're necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Now, it just seems to me, Chair Bronson, that that's a dog that would look good at Temple.
Or synagogue.
Or it could be an LGBT dog.
See?
Look at that, see? He likes those pink pants. He likes those pink pants. Look at that, he matches his little, you know, kerchief there. Anyways, thank you for coming today. If any of you have friends in your congregations or, or in your circle of, of friends and constituents, please tell them there's a lot of nice animals over there at Pima Animal Care that would love to have a good home and make your life fuller and enrich your life in so many ways. And, you know, it's just important that we spread the word amongst ourselves. But of course, for the rabbis, we, we probably find someone to donate the dogs too. I'm just saying, if you were so inclined. Thank you.
Guilt is a good thing. Oh, I know you know.
I apologize. I apologize, I did 12 years in Catholic school too.
Well, no, I mean, yes, you have Catholic or Jewish, you have guilt, guilt's the name of the game.
It works.
All right, again, thank you, Jenny, and I want to take a moment and recognize the chief of police from the city of Tucson and thank him, and it looks like he's got a member of his command staff for coming. I believe you're here on the Orlando proclamation. We really want to thank you for being here. Okay, so that brings us then to presentations and proclamations. I'm moving to item five on the regular, on these. It's our, actually, it's the special final budget, budget adoption meeting agenda. Item five, presentation of a proclamation to Veronica Soto, Co. Community Services, Miguel Soto, Pima County Health Department, Scott Blades, Tucson Interfaith HIV AIDS Network, Abby Jensen, Southern Arizona Gender Alliance, Wendell Hicks, Southern Arizona AIDS Foundation, and Colette Barajas, Central Realty, proclaiming, and Joseph Howell, President of GLBT Chamber of Commerce, proclaiming the month of June 2016 to be LGBT Pride Month. I'll move the item. Motion in a second. There are no objections, motion carries. And I would welcome all board members if you want to come down, and then Supervisor Elias, if you'd like to make the presentation, the proclamation to those individuals' names.
Chair Bronson, I would also ask us to consider item one on the addendum, the presentation of the proclamation, warning members of the.
You want to do them both together?
Let's do them all together, and, and I would also invite the chief managers to come up and join us as well, please.
Yes, and just whoever's brought from command staff. Okay, so you want to move item one? Motion in a second, any objections? Hearing none, motion carries, so we all want to move to the.
Okay, everybody, come around this side of the. Come on, so we have an even looking group of people. We spent some people over there. Come on over here. This is an important day for all of us to stand together, and so we are here together to mourn our losses and also to recognize the power and strength of the LGBT community and what it brings to Tucson, our state, our country, and the world. And we refuse to be divided in that. Instead, we demand that we be unified and that we speak with understanding and love about each other, and that those are the most important concepts we share as human beings. And so we're all here to do that today joyfully, but also recognizing that we mourn the loss of those who passed away in Orlando last week. We share the sorrow of their families. We offer them our condolences as well. I'm going to go ahead and read this proclamation regarding LGBT week and month, excuse me. And then Chair Bronson is going to read the next proclamation, but please join together in your hearts and minds as we read these powerful words about people from our community.